The City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, will be held October 15th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. If we could please have the clerk make sure we're all here.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Haltz?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry's absent. Mayor Olinsky?
Here. Thank you. And please stand and join me in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Any councilmembers have something to report?
I attended the grand opening along with Councilmember Narin and Vice Mayor Henry. It was very informative. Ron was there along with Chief Gessel. I don't remember anybody else. Was there anybody else, Ron? No? It was really kind of impressive. You think of it well as a junk store, and they have completely redone their promotion and their business plan. Are they here tonight?
No, I don't think so.
No, they're not here, sorry.
At any rate, it's more on the design of like a Walmart, and everything is well organized. They have people in the back room that continually replenish the stock on the floor as it is sold, and is a very neat, very well organized operation. It was very impressive compared to what it used to be. So, a welcome addition to our community.
It was so impressive that I took my daughter the next day and we did a lot of shopping.
Spent money.
We did.
All right. Any other councilmembers have anything?
Well, I'd just like to remind everybody of the Project Connect coming up on October 22nd from 1:00 to 5:00 at the REC Center. That's the Community Resource Fair that the social service agencies have put together, and so we hope to see a lot of community members there to come and learn about the community's resources.
Great, thank you. All right, I missed the Goodwill Grand Opening, darn it, but I did attend the Jiu-Jitsu Grand Opening, October 15th, right down here on the end of Main Street. That was good to see. Jiu-Jitsu is Brazilian form of wrestling. I did not participate. They also do yoga and what all down there, too, so it's a nice addition. The gentleman that's operating the Jiu-Jitsu has a couple of other businesses in Old Town, including Merkin Osteria, and he's doing the big project up on the hill, so certainly expanding his operations here. We're glad to have him here in Cottonwood, lucky to have him here in Cottonwood. Watershed Conference is coming up, October 29th, going to be speaking there at the conference out in Camp Verde, so hope to see a lot of you there. And that's all I have. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a list. While I'm going over the list, though, if I, and I, Steve's not here, so he can't tell me no, but we had Congressman Paul Gozar in town this week, and I'm going to ask the Chief of Police to come up and hopefully recognize who he recognized. I can't remember. He was here to recognize our Victims Advocacy Group? Do you want to come up and give us a brief update on that? While he's getting ready for that, I'll go through a couple items. Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department is having their open house on Thursday, October 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll be meeting our firefighters and fire chiefs. They'll be riding tours, talking about fire safety and prevention, and they'll be doing a live-fire demonstration. It's free, a fun-filled family night, so if you can make it. I know that we have a special session that night, so hopefully some of you can make it over there before the special session at 5:30. We have a great retirement ceremony, the retirement of Officer Steve Phoenix, who has over 21 years of experience here in Cottonwood on the PD Force. It'll be Thursday at 10:00 AM, and it'll be located at the Cottonwood Public Safety Building over there. Verde Valley Annual Mancanita Day, Kids Against Hunger. This is a community meal packing event on Saturday, October 19th, from 8:00 to 10:00 and 10:00 to 12:00, and it'll be located at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds, so if you can come over and help pack some packages for food, that would be helpful. October 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00, is the First Annual Trunk Retreat. I'll let the chief maybe talk about that over there, hosted by our Cottonwood Police and Fire and Medical Departments. There'll be decorated cars, costumes, candy given out over there at the Public Safety Building parking lot. And then the next night, we are having Terror in Old Town, a haunted house sponsored by our own Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. It'll be held on Thursday, Halloween night, at the youth center from 6:30 to 9:30 for ages 10 and up. If they're under 10, they have to bring an adult. Admission is $5 or $1 off if you bring non-perishable food items that we're going to be donating. I hear there'll be chainsaws and blood and scary stuff, so come on out and have a little fun there. We're partnering with the Fall Carnival, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00, at the Old Town Activity Park. That event is also, is free, games, carved pumpkin contest. You can carve it at home and bring it down, and we'll judge it and we'll give away some prizes. Old Town is having their Safe Night Halloween from 5:00 to 7:00 that same night, sponsored by the OTA, the Old Town Association, so a lot going on Halloween night here in Old Town sponsoring the kids' events, fun, safe things to do. And then coming up in Maine is the Walking on Main Art Show, Saturday, November 9th, from 11:00 to 5:00. Come on down and join art, wine, music, and the car show. And then that same day, at 10:00, we're going to have the grand reopening of the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. We'll have speakers, offer tours, and a ribbon cutting, so come on down. And then, Chief, if you could briefly talk about Congressman Gozar, thank you.
Certainly. You wanted me to touch on trunk or treat as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Trunk or treat, it's the first year we're going to try this one. We invite all kids and their parents to come down. Should be a fun event where it's a precursor to Halloween, so it's an opportunity to get double the candy, right? Yeah, and there'll be also, I've been made aware that there's prizes for the best decorated trunk.
Oh?
This is a thing now, so it's, we want to get in on the thing and make sure Cottonwood is represented, and our kids have ample opportunity to see their local dentist soon. Beyond that, also Officer Phoenix, I would remark that if you have a chance to come by his retirement ceremony, this is, I queried my staff today, and this is the only third retirement we've had in a decade. So I think that's a testament to the low attrition rate that we have. We also have a relatively young department that's getting older. But Officer Phoenix, 20, 21 years, all on the street of Cottonwood, which is, it's a young man's game, so hats off to him. And lastly, Congressman Gozar makes it a point, anytime he comes into his district once a year to recognize law enforcement representatives, generally focuses on police officers. We are very proud of our Victims Advocate Program, which you're all well aware of. Johanna Roth Chow is the employee that we chose to forward her name to the congressman to recognize, and he was kind enough to spend some time and do just that, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. And I'm looking out there to see anybody here really from the public, but more than welcome to address this. I will close the floor and move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 1, 2019.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second. Okay. Councilmember Narin made the motion, and Holt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Now we roll into the consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless councilmember or citizen so requests. Tonight, we have nine items on the consent agenda. I'll read them all out, and if there's anyone out there that would like to have an item pooled, just wave your hand at us. Item one is Resolution Number 3027, approving a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Plane and Division Aeronautics Group for aid in financing an updated airport master plan study for the Cottonwood Airport. Item two, professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for a new airport master plan for the Cottonwood Municipal Airport. Item three is funding of city-sponsored water conservation education program for students in grades K through 8 for the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school years. Item four, acceptance of Governor's Office Highway Safety Grant for the Cottonwood Police Department for Selective Traffic Enforcement Patrol. Item five, acceptance of a grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for the Cottonwood Police Department for DUI Task Force patrols. Item six, remote tasting room liquor license application submitted by John McLaughlin, owner agent for Tantrum Wines, for wine tasting room to be located at 918 North Main Street. Item seven is a fair festival liquor license application submitted by John McLaughlin, applicant for 21 grams, located at 918 North Main Street, Suite C, for the time period of October 18, 2019, through November 2nd, 2019. Item eight, special event liquor license application submitted by Christian Oliver Del Rio, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for chamber mixers scheduled for November 21, 2019, at 115 South Main Street, Suite A, Friends of the Verde River, and December 12, 2019, at 500 East Cherry Street, which is the Verde Valley Senior Center. And last, item nine, special event liquor license application submitted by Tacy Pastor, applicant for the Verde Valley Humane Society for an event scheduled for November 10, 2019, at the Muse Gallery located at 735 North Main Street. Is there an item that a councilmember would like to have pooled? No? Okay, then I would move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Alt House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now we go on to new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item one is discussion, consideration, and possible approval of a proposed license agreement with the Verde Natural Resource Conservation District Environmental Education Center for use of part of the old city fire station located at 345 East Mingus Avenue as an environmental discovery education center. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Out with me, Aaron Cody, with the Natural Resource Conservation District Education Center. We brought this to you once before during a work session for consideration, and at your direction, we went back and put together an agreement in place to allow the Natural Resource Conservation District of Verde Valley, their education center, to actually utilize or take advantage of the old fire station, which previously hasn't been used for some time. The pro proposal, as you've seen in your packets, is designed to be a discovery center, a water conservation, natural resources education center for both kids as well as adults. We feel this would be a great use of that facility, since it isn't being used, it's at no cost to the city. They will be upgrading the facility to accommodate their activities. Like I said, it is open to the public, it is free to the kids. For some of the senior activities or the adult activities, there would be a charge just to cover their costs, but other than that, everything else is pretty much free. We think it's an excellent use of this. I've been familiar with the one up in Flagstaff, Williams area called Willow Bend. It's an outstanding program that they operate up there, and we're hoping to bring that to the Verde Valley, be open to the entire valley here, just as education started here in Cottonwood, conservation education for K through 8, is now expanded to include the entire Verde Valley, which has been a testament to the, how should I put it, persistence and drive of Aaron and her staff. And with that, we'd be opening up, unless, Aaron, would you like to say something?
I just wanted to thank you all for having the home for you tonight, and we do do incredible work with the children right now. We service over 4,000 children throughout the Verde Valley, which is almost all of the children in the Verde Valley from K through 8th grade. We definitely want to get this going for high school level, for college level, and for adults, so we have been doing this for 10 years. We're ready to move on in that plan and get this going for the Verde Valley.
Great. Any questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say I think this is a wonderful idea, opportunity, and it's going to be great for our kids, especially with the school right across the street, or one of our schools right across the street. I just, I just think it's a perfect location, great use of the space, and good job to everybody involved.
I would concur with that. I think it's a wonderful program. Look forward to you coming.
Great. I'm certainly pleased it's in Cottonwood, and appreciate the council's support on this, good use of space, and a good organization to support, so, thank you. And the, the agreement seemed very thorough, even down to the fact that you guys can't use any minerals that are located underneath the land that you're leasing, so, anyway, very thorough. I don't think Steve has anything to add, hopefully.
Steve, did you hear that? Did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, nobody has any questions.
Okay, very good.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the proposed license agreement with the Verde Natural Resource Conservation District Educational or Environmental Education Center for use of part of the old city fire station building located at 345 East Mingus Avenue as an environmental education center.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Holt seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Haltz?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Ordinance Number 668, amending Section 406 parking and loading requirements of the zoning ordinance by adding new sections 1 through 5 to Section 406(c)(2)D regarding alternative paving and surfacing options. This is the first reading tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Ordinance 668, it's a request for a zoning ordinance change to Section 406 or parking and loading requirements. Right now, the ordinance states that any surfacing must be asphalt or chip seal if it meets certain requirements, and that's for any new business or an expansion of an existing big business that requires more intense parking spaces. We have had several potential developments and applicants and existing property owners that would like to expand. The ideas that they have don't lend themselves to necessarily need paving, hard surfacing, asphalt. The fairgrounds, for example, they have a large facility there, and to do one of the expansions, they want to do, they would have to buy code, the way it's written now, asphalt and chip seal, a large portion that just doesn't need it. There's other places that just have that rustic feel to it that wouldn't necessarily benefit from being paved. Working with the fire department, the city engineer, they're all on board with this. We have put provisions in here, they have to meet certain requirements and get approval by the city engineer for any alternative surfacing options that they would present. There's a few pictures. It is an option that you see more and more in a lot of places that allow this. There's some pavers used for it here, different types of materials all over the place. What we're requiring is that they're still able to eliminate dust, so that you have to have no dust, like you can't just keep it dirt. They have to be able to maintain parking stall markings that don't just get washed away, just can't paint it over the top of gravel. Does have to maintain fire truck load requirements, so all of these things will be evaluated by the city engineer when it's proposed, and there's many different types of options out there, so that's why we give these requirements and let them presented to the city engineer for final approval. It did go to the Planning Zoning Commission in September. They did recommend approval at their regular September meeting and ratified it on September 30th for recommendation. Any questions?
Any questions from council for staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I can add real quick, just to make sure you also understand, stormwater runoff is a concern, so instead of creating big areas of asphalt, we can create areas that absorb the rain, and so helps with our stormwater runoff. And then, of course, the heat islands created in big cities with all that blacktop, so it's kind of given us alternatives to adding to unfavorable conditions and making our city more livable and sustainable.
I would also add that it was council's desire for staff to work with applicants previously for something like this.
Right, and I'll just say, I think it's great. I am pleased that we're hopefully moving in this direction. I'm sure many larger cities in Arizona and across the Southwest wish that they had done similar things for stormwater prevention, but also the heat island effect years and years ago, and I certainly hope that some of our developers will take advantage of the new opportunity if this should pass.
So what other materials are out there?
I don't know of any specific ones myself. I do know there's a lot of them. I don't, the city engineer can throw some, shed some light on that.
Mayor, councilmembers, Robert Winnicky, city engineer. You asked the question as to what are some of the options. They make special concretes that are pervious. It actually looks like normal concrete, but it's got an open, kind of bubble texture to it, and the water actually just infiltrates through. They do the same thing with asphalt. You can also use brick pavers, and you can do stabilized gravels. They have kind of cellular polyethylene mats that you put down. You can actually put different gravels in there, and you can put a palative on it to help keep it in place, kind of like a glue, so those are some of the options that we're looking at, considering. I think the pavers definitely give it a rustic aesthetic look to it, not a super expensive option to go with, like you would if you went with a pervious concrete or pervious asphalt, but there's, you know, varying price ranges that you can look at for these items.
Could you go back one slide? Yeah, I have that at a building, and I want to tear it up and pave it.
I recognize that, yeah, that's.
That's fair, and as council or city manager Corbin said, you know, runoff is a big thing. You know, we've had a lot of issues with drainage, and it seems like we're getting more intense storms these days, and this does have the ability to help reduce the runoff that we see.
Right. All right.
What kind of a texture is that?
That one's hard to see. I think it's, I think it's like a concrete type of.
Concrete block, and then the voids are filled with pea gravel, which goes everywhere.
It goes everywhere, right? If you use something a little more angular, it'll actually stay in place better.
So how is this material, if somebody's on crutches or wheelchair or has some sort of problem?
The wheelchair works fine with this one, because you've got enough of that smooth surface. It becomes a little bit more challenging on, so like a cane. I think a lot of these are actually, the way they're designed is it's a close, except in this case, that you can kind of bridge the two materials and get that stability, so this would not be exactly put into the handicap spaces. You still have to follow your ADA guidelines, so you still have the requirements to have your normal concrete in those locations.
Yeah, because I'm getting close to using that cane here. I'm not sure it can get around.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good questions. Any other questions? Okay, this is just the first reading, so appreciate you'll be bringing it back for vote in November, correct?
Yes, we'll put it back on for first meeting in November.
Okay, all right, very good. If we could then have the clerk read Ordinance Number 668 by title only?
Ordinance Number 668, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavacay County, Arizona, amending Section 406 parking and loading requirements of the zoning ordinance by adding new sections 1 through 5 to Section 406(c)(2)D pertaining to porous paving and surfacing options. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, item three is public hearing regarding proposed increases to certain use and rental rates, fees, and charges for city parks and recreation facilities.
Mr. Mayor, Skye Allen's going to lead us off here, but the next three ordinances are related, and they're related to us updating our fees, taking some out of the municipal code that aren't up to date, taking them all out of the parks code and creating a separate schedule, and he's going to kind of go through that, but it's really a cleanup. There's a few price increases, but most of them you've already seen, and he'll kind of go through that, but all three are related, and we're trying to make it easier and more clear on where you'll find these prices, and that council approves all of our fees and charges in the Parks and Rec team. Currently, they're in different spots, so it's an effort to clean up. You're going to see this over the next couple of months several times as we try to work on improving our code.
Right, thank you. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, council, just following up to that, what kicked this all off is May 14th, when we brought fee structure, proposed fee structure for the clubhouse and also the recreation center. After looking more deeply into it, we realized that it was in code as well, so we'd have to go through and, like Mr. Corbin said, do some housekeeping on the code. Couple of key things that we had to do for the code really quickly is, again, we created a consolidated fee for membership dues, and that really had to do with all of our rental facilities and also for the REC Center. In this, in this process, too, by pulling it out of code, it gives staff and council the flexibility to review the fee structure annually, if you decide if that's what you want to do, and then go in there and change, from my understanding, by resolution, the fee structure. Markets go up and down, cost recovery at the REC Center, that's always something we're looking at and also analyzing, and so it helps have enough flexibility to make those resolutions. We had some slight increases for the Parks Recreation Code side, and that was field prep rates and alley rates for the fields. If you look at your packets, and I can pull up the fee schedule if you'd like, but basically all we did is to ensure that the city's not losing money when it comes to field prep. Mr. Jack Teal's here, he's much more knowledgeable in this than I am. It costs us money to prep these fields, and by charging $30 an hour, it helps us recover some of those costs. Field deposits, making them all 150 was really a consistency thing. We had some at 100, some at 150, and so we just thought a more equitable across the board, easier for staff to manage, just make it straight 150. Again, that's a deposit, they get that back. Quatic Center rental rates, with part-time minimum wage going up, we need at least three guards when we have a pool party, and with that minimum wage going up, that allows us to cover the fees or the staffing costs for that party. And again, the REC Center membership rates, council might have reviewed that in May, as well as the clubhouse and our reservations and rentals throughout the city. What's really neat is by having the waiver side in here for field preps, just to back up a bit, this allows us the flexibility for organizations like Little League. We can offer them the ability to do their own fields, and there will be no charge, or if we do their fields, there'll be a charge. It allows us to partner, as well as on the tennis courts. In the past, we had a fee schedule in there, when we used to have a tennis pro, from my understanding, and Richard's in the audience, and we don't really do that anymore, and so by saying by contract, gives us availability of that if tournaments and things like that come to the area, we can develop an individual profit sharing contract with that organization, so. Any questions?
No, not for me.
Yeah, I like the idea of the waiver for the, like the Little League and I presume girls softball and those type of activities.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, apparently one of our former police chiefs used to prep all the fields for free on his own, and so we had, when that no longer occurred, then we started prepping the fields, and it sounded like almost eight hours to prep all of the fields, so it's pretty staff-intensive. So if they want to take on that responsibility, then they can use the fields basically for free, because we don't charge them, correct me if I'm wrong, for actual use of the fields, so they already get the use of the fields for free, this is just the staff time to prep it, and if they prep it, then we would, we would waive that. Along with the contracts, pickleball, they would like, you guys gave us some resources to fix the courts, the outdoor courts this year, we're going to get those fixed. They're talking about hosting tournaments here in Cottonwood, so this would allow our team to contract with them on a price negotiation, so we get part of it and those kinds of things, so creates a lot more flexibility and the ability for, to not charge when we don't need to.
Yeah, years ago, when I was involved in girls softball, I prepped many, many fields on my own, and, you know, we weren't associated with the city back then, so essentially there was no choice, so. I used to go in there and make a lot of dirt and dust.
Before you put that, before you pick that cane up, then, maybe you could get out there and help us out a little bit.
Yeah, well, it's getting closer every day.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, Jack. Mr. Mayor, one more thing, Jack wanted me to make sure to also mention that AYSO currently does their fields, like this gives us the availability to work with other organizations too regarding field prep.
Great. Great.
I believe that's it for this portion of the presentation. Mary Ann, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's time for the public hearing.
Yeah, so this is a public hearing. Again, I don't see any folks out there from the public, but if anyone wants to sneak in in the next few minutes, if one wants, go on twice. Okay, close the floor. We move on to item 4 then, which is ordinance Number 669, amending sections 12.12.030 and 12.12.040 of the 1993 Parks and Recreation Code.
Mr. Mayor, council, again, this is some housekeeping, I'm just going through this code and cleaning up a bit. So, real quick, we're going to go through just update on the Parks Recreation Code, and then we're also going to discuss the purpose behind the code. First of all, the purpose behind the code, the code is a hard copy document, that's the city clerk's office, and it really pertains to operational things, parks, hours of parks, and things like that, that keeps our organization in line, and it's codified outside of the municipal code, so it's separate but also within ordinance. So, one of the things we wanted to do off the bat, and was kind of brought up in the last presentation, is pull the fee structure out of code so that council and staff have the flexibility to make changes by resolution. So, that's one of the first thing we did, is we pulled everything out of the Parks Recreation Code. Copies of the fee structure will be at the recreation center, as well as the city clerk's office. The other thing is authorize the city manager to lower fees, so one of the things when the recreation center was built, is that council made sure, wanted staff to know that we still want to be able to work with this community. Some of the members in this community can't afford a membership, but if they approach us, we want to be able to work with these folks. And so, this gives us the availability to go to the city manager, present an application, and work with the city manager on this process. Currently, there's no Parks Recreation Director position, so that's why the city manager was substituted for the Parks Recreation Director. In addition, removal of policy regarding program subsidies. This refers to, there was language in there that said if it's a adult program, it's got to recoup 90% of its cost. If it's a youth program, it's got to recoup 50% of the cost. We're just asking council if we can go back to the drawing board, come up with a more updated policy, and present it back to you. So, that's why it's been removed from the code as of now. Any questions?
Questions? This is first reading, so you're going to be bringing this stuff back to us for vote. Okay, if we could then get the city clerk to read ordinance Number 669 by title only?
Ordinance Number 669, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending sections 12.12.030 and 12.12.040 of the 1993 Parks and Recreation Code. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, and last is ordinance Number 670, amending Title 12 Sidewalks and Public Places of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 12.16 Recreation Fees in its entirety, and this, again, is the first reading.
And this is the last piece of this puzzle for tonight, and this just removes the fee schedule comments from municipal code.
Okay. Any questions from council? No, okay. Again, first reading, so we'll bring this back for a vote, and I just, I want to say, I just, I know this was kind of a head-scratcher, and I appreciate staff, and especially the clerk, trying to direct everybody to work through this, and I think this, although it's cumbersome right now, will make things a lot smoother in the future, and give council a bit more control on how these rates and everything are set.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could add, ditto. The clerk, Mary Ann, and Steve, our city attorney, worked very hard to try to figure out how to make this happen, so it's simpler to bring back to council. I felt like there were fees in different places, and it just wasn't very easy to understand and find, and this process will clean that up, and Mary Ann and Steve were instrumental in making that happen, and do know that we need to clean up the whole Parks and Recreation Code, so over the next several months, we'll be bringing that back when we've had a chance to update that code, but this is a good start to get our fees in place as we go through the budget year, so thank you, Mary Ann and Steve.
Great, thanks. All right, city clerk, please read ordinance Number 670 by title only.
Ordinance Number 670, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Title 12 Sidewalks and Public Places of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 12.16 Recreation Fees in its entirety. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is claims and adjustments.
Move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I move with your turn.
He beat me to it!
Sorry, I'd be quicker. Mayor made the motion, and Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to say no, just so I can make a vote.
You've been outvoted.